Good evening, everyone. 6:00 PM on February the 6th. The Bel Air Beach City Council meeting will now come to a close. In our last work session, this council decided to include an invocation prayer and pledge of allegiance led by a different council member at each meeting. This month is Councilmember Frank Baker. Mr. Baker, you have the floor.
Dear God and our heavenly Father, let us pray that this council will make wise and godly decisions which are always in the best interest of this community and your people. Let us pray that you will protect our police and all first responders and the people of Bel Air Beach. Let us pray that you will protect the beautiful masterpiece of this island from any storms or mishaps. And let us pray that all people find peace with one another, set aside your differences, and promote the work of your name. In Jesus' name, this sign, praying amen.
Mr. Baker, please continue and lead us in the pledge. Can you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the King and the Son and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Ms. Tindrey, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Frank Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Melinda Livingston.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Otero.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Wechler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Moore.
Present.
And Vice Mayor Jody Shirley was unable to attend.
Thank you, Penny. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion. This motion is made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Mike Zabel? All in favor? Aye. And opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we move to citizen comments. Any citizen who would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait for me to call them. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Any council member who would like to respond to citizens' comments, please hold your responses until we reach the council comments at the end of the meeting. Would any citizens like to address the council? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium, give your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Aaron Lance. I just want to take a moment of your time to introduce myself. Recently, I accepted the position here in the city of Bel Air Beach as the community services administrator. That's the reason why I came in this evening. Just wanted to show my face and can't wait to meet you at some point during my time here over the city.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. Very nice to meet you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, Mr. Melinda.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. Tammy Melenda, 97, Parker Drive. Just want to say a couple things representing the Bel Air Beach community foundation. Couple of updates and announcements. So, so far, our brick program has been going very well. We've had enough brick orders to do our first square, so that should be installed shortly. One new addition, if you say you have, if you own your own company or if you have your own logo, you can, for an additional $10, put your own logo as the stamp on the brick. And if you have any questions about that, there's more details on our website. Second thing, we're gonna have our first fundraiser on April 22nd. It's a little bit different from events that we've had in the past. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM on a Saturday. It will be an indoor event. It's going to be an Earth Day Sunset Social Celebration. We're gonna have a DJ. Clean Eats is gonna be here with the food. We're gonna have a cash bar. And it's going to be a $10 minimum entry fee for, or donation for entry fee. And the fundraiser is to raise money for the 16th Street Kayak Launch, which has been requested many times, but hopefully we raise enough money to get that installed. The next thing I'd like to talk about is February. It's Free Friends of February. It's a drive for the Pinellas County Animal Shelter. So, there is more information on our website, and there are two boxes in the lobby of City Hall, and they have a list of things that they're requesting. As you know, Frank Baker, the city council, he volunteers there. And so, he mentioned at Beach Cleanup one day that there was a need, so we thought that we would do a drive during the month of February. Keep Pinellas Beautiful, a post about this. Our first bridge cleanup was very successful. We had 22 volunteers, which was wonderful. And we collected about 40 bags of trash from under the bridge. Please look for our new sign. They should be installing it on the causeway shortly, and our next cleanup hits in April. And then, last but not least, the receipts. If you donated in 2022, all the receipts have been sent out. If you did not get your donations, you can reach out for Wendy, Nicole, or I, and we'll be happy to give that to you. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would any other citizens like to speak? Alright, so that closes citizen comments. Now, we're on to item three. We have a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office beginning with law enforcement monthly report.
Good evening to everyone. Sergeant Roy Switz, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, and I am here presenting the activity for December of 2022 under the UCR property and personal crimes. Oh, Robert, I'd like to say that it was a slow one, but unfortunately, if you weren't aware, we had a lot of vehicle burglaries one weekend during the month of December. It was the weekend, I believe, of December 10th and 11th. So, with that being said, there was also one motor vehicle theft related to that murder where a key was left inside an unlocked vehicle. So, with that being said, again, we, as the sheriff's office, strongly encourage residents and visitors to make sure they lock their doors and not leave any valuables inside. If we move along to the arrest section, there were a total of four people that were arrested within the city. And in looking at the activity, that looked like that was transient activity, a couple of DUIs and a DWLSR. Under deputy activity, you'll see that there were a total of 720 events in the city leading that were directed patrols and traffic active, I'm sorry, traffic enforcement. And then, there was one crash in the city, and that was located at Gulf Boulevard and 7th Street. And then, there were a total of 174 combined citations and warnings issued within the city. And that is all I have.
Questions from the cast? Who's court booked that December 10th and 11th? Was anyone apprehended and recorded?
In the research that I did, there has not yet been anybody apprehended. The detectives are following up on any means, looking at video evidence and whatever they comply and go for there.
I just want to comment that deputies were going up and down the street, not on every place, or I thought that was history. I'm really concerned about that.
Well, that is, obviously, and I wasn't working that weekend. My deputies weren't working that weekend. But I enjoyed, as part of routine patrol, driving up and down every street within the city. And I can tell you that Deputy Dean also enjoys driving up and down the city, sits out on Gulf Boulevard. So, unfortunately, we can't be everywhere, so that's why we strongly encourage residents to make sure that they lock their doors and don't leave any valuables inside.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Right now, we're on the code enforcement monthly report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, citizens, Deputy Clacke. For the record, as you see in your reports, we, again, very busy for the month of January. Some of the things that we did take care of is we had three properties within Bel Air Beach that we had some major issues on. One at 12th and 17th, and one on 21st. With the help of Kyle, we issued letters and summons or hearings for to get these properties cleaned up. And again, throughout the city, also trying to get some more of the citizens to comply with local ordinances. Had a few extra issues with permits again, no license contractors. But again, we were just working on that building department and the Pinellas County construction licensing work.
Questions or comments from the council? Yes, Mr. Zabel. Look at that on the list here. 109 13th Street. Was that mentioned on previous month reports of code violations?
Uh, 109 13th.
Shows here it's posted notice reference to violation.
Uh, yes, that was a, an issue that we had a pool installed there. And so, there was a sediment bag that had to be changed. So, we had, we had some issues with that before.
Any other questions or comments? I didn't notice that we received more information than we usually do, which is, which is nice. I'm sure it's a, it's a combined effort to put all this together, but this is, this is incredible data, and it's nice to see it.
Thank you. Well, the credit's gotta go to Kyle. He used my t-shirt, and we just kind of worked on these things together, but yes.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, now we are on to item four. This is a presentation from Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District by Chief Jeff Davidson. I have invited Jeff Davidson to begin hearing this monthly reports again. So, with that being said, take good care.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers in the community. I'm Jeffrey Davidson, Fire Chief for Pinellas Suncoast Fire and Rescue District, proudly serving Bel Air Beach. On behalf of the entire district, I wanted to express my sincere thank you for the support on passing the referendum vote in November by 74%, which will allow us to continue to serve our residents in Bel Air Beach. We've been serving since 1951, so thank everybody very much for your support. There's a lot of activity in PSFRD as we continue to strengthen our organization. We're actively pursuing the assistance of firefighter grants through FEMA, and based on our population, we're eligible for up to $1 million in funding. And we're looking at all the items that meet those funding opportunities requirements. The submissions are due this Friday, and the awards begin weekly in September. So, we're submitting for new fire hoses, extrication equipment, bunker gear, thermal imaging cameras, new motor roller radios, physical fitness equipment, many of the things that firefighters need to do their jobs. In the upcoming months, I will be asking my Board of Commissioners to allow me to put out a RFP for fire station design and construction. We are conducting a study to verify the proper placement of the stations. And currently, we are looking at at least for a new fire station at the very northern end of Indian Rocks Beach to better serve the city of Bel Air Beach. Our firefighters and paramedics recently saved the life of a commissioner in a neighboring town who had suffered a massive heart attack. Early placement of the AEDM CPR by the police chief who was there was very instrumental. My crews arrived in under four minutes, and they performed advanced cardiac life support. And Jason was transported to a local hospital, and he made a full recovery. Their commission honored my firefighters for their efforts. And then, I submitted that to the John Maroni Legacy Foundation. And our crews were chosen out of all of Pinellas County to receive an award at the First Responder's Appreciation Dinner this Saturday. So, I'm very proud of the hard work and professional services that our firefighters and paramedics always provide for our community. We'd like to ask the commissioners here today, councilmembers, to allow me to use the Bel Air Beach City Hall to do a public information session upcoming on the status of emergency medical services for the beaches, particularly Bel Air Beach, and how the services need to be improved and will be funded by the county at no additional cost to our residents. If I could have your permission to coordinate the date that the hall is open, we'll begin possibly February 27th. It's a Monday night. And it will be open to questions, answers, and a presentation from anybody who would like to attend.
Thank you, Chief Davidson. Uh, council, before I turn the floor over to you, I see we have a problem with the chief working a day out with the city manager. It sounds like you just need to reach out to the city manager and plan an April-September, and we look forward to that. Now, council, do you have any questions? I have, I have one. What is the response time only that you describe it?
Yeah, from notification to the fire department to at the patient was four minutes and three seconds, I believe. And that's one of the things that I want to explain in this presentation is the correlation between time and survival rates. You know, there's a lot of things that in the medical field where time is muscle, if it's a cardiac event, or time is brain, if it's a stroke event, and things that need to be done. And some things that are lacking in the system that have been lacking for quite some time. And I want to address how we can fix that so that we can have the best services for our residents and all of our visitors to keep everybody safe.
Thank you very much. It's, it's an impressive time, and I hope that I never have to use your services, but if I do, I owe you a thank.
Yes, sir. I left a few business cards on the table. If anybody would like to get ahold of me, however, my email address and phone number are on there. I'll be happy to, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we're up to item number five. This is the city attorney for, Mr. Moore, do you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the last few weeks, I had the occasion to meet with the manager on a few occasions on various items, one of which was facilitating two meetings with the planning and zoning ordinance in his capacity as your man planning associations when you move forward potential comp plan amendments, as well as one of the ordinances that's before you this evening. As we approach discussing the ordinance this evening, it occurred to me that before our last meeting on the 21st, I had the opportunity to travel to St. Augustine and present to the Institute for Elective Municipal Official Team Code. A new council member joined there and attended. And I had the opportunity to present on parliamentary procedure and the role of the city attorney. And one of the things that I talked to at some length, and that was only a few weeks after having given a similar presentation to the Lucius County Commission, was on the importance of debating the measure at hand and not the individual members or motives of your peers. Essentially, we are all here in service of the public trust. At the last meeting, and on at least one, likely two occasions that I can remember previously, there's been some suggestion that I produce work product for you with the sole purpose of generating lawsuits or some other profit mechanism for myself on the back end. I take my job very seriously. I take the, my oath to the Florida Department, the oath I take as a constitutional officer, charter officer in your communities. This is my livelihood, this is food on the table, this is my good deed. So, it's important to me that you recognize that as I give you work products, I take no issue with you telling me that you're unsatisfied with the work product, that you think the policy should move in a different direction, be better framed, better frames, approach differently, taking into account factors that I may have in my infallible state of the human overlook some factor. I'm happy to consider all of that, all of that is appropriate. I will, I do take umbrage with the suggestion that I'm doing work driven by some profit motive, most especially because I truly believe in the altruism of what it is you folks do. I thank you for the work you do, because frankly, I don't do it. I get to tell you, man, that sounds like a tough decision. Tell me what you're gonna say. And, and that's how this whole system works. I can't allow something that's in cities that's going to address. And I did not wish to derail you the work session as you debated an important matter of your community by addressing it in that moment. But it was something that, to me, I felt needed addressing, so I appreciate the opportunity to address that during my report. Otherwise, I continue to work with the manager to advance the suggested revisions to the sign code, to advance your comp plan amendments through the LPA, and any other issues as they present themselves. And I'm happy to answer any questions or address any concerns we have.
Council? Any questions, Mr. Moore? Yes, I'll take it.
Yeah, I just want to thank you personally. You know, looking at what you do for us and leaves and talk with you, I appreciate everything you do for this council. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, and I'm certainly not fishing for any compliments or any of the sort, but I appreciate you just. I just wish to be clear that I can see the impact on your business.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Alright, thank you for addressing that, and I appreciate your word also. And thank you for this report. Alright, next, we are up to item six, which is the city manager's report. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmen. Starting off with the 12th and 13th Street project. We did, on January 24th, get that, I talked about it in the last meeting, to replace, came in under warranty from the manufacturer, staffing up there immediately, put it back in so that the check valves function properly and they're not getting tied while she's back in the streets. We came a little bit over budget, that is, on the agenda tonight for a budget amendment. I did get one, the Colts back from the televised for the Kira Place line. And for two bikes, we're looking at about $50,000. I want to see if I can get that out. I did possibly enter a stormwater project, because if we can get competitive pricing on that, it would be useful to us, and maybe to hire a repair. So, hoping to tag that along on the way. The underground project, right now, we're just waiting on the materials. Once we get some materials, stop by at the end, moving now. Same place as the last project. It'll take off pretty quickly with the concrete. The 7th Street boat ramp, I got a sketch drawing from the engineer. I bet it's the last meeting, asked him if there's some way we can make the ramp more functional for the residents. He recommended if we do anything, we, he drew up a sketch of a concrete duct at the end of the ramp in Burla. And he, inner, I guess, inner, as you'd say, some C S O lineup and some public traffic underneath it. And he says that's done in a lot of areas, and that'll just increase like the stability of the ground after the ramp. So, I ordered all the supply, my staff will be out there probably in a moment when I finish that up. After that, you know, they replaced all the filler and the saw on January 26th. I think they did a beautiful job. Really excited to get the ramp open for residents. For our 17th and 18th Street project, the citizens' volunteer run, Skenead and I have been working pretty hard, along with Heather, our financial advisor, in putting the other projections for the next five years. And we've shared that with the financiers, and we're looking to be approved for. And at this point, we're, we received one term sheet from one bank and another from South State. So, if that's why you're gonna take back the CFC and then you're gonna put us in one of these meetings for a presentation. Code enforcement, like I said, I kind of revised the report. I tried to make it a little bit more visual, take out a lot of the check boxes that were in between all the cells, and relate it back to the survey we did. So, what I did, so what I did is I made Steve's report, I dropped on this of the categories we talked about on our survey so that he could select what, you know, what, where the issue fell, and then we could track it, and then we'd be able to put the numbers back and resurvey. Another thing I noticed as I was looking at it is we kind of had like a start date, a close date. If you looked at every violation, it was like it started and closed on the same day. And we have this page open thing, it didn't really apply to anything. So, I reworked the sheet so that, and it started with Steve, that when, you know, it's first sighting or whatever, the violation, he keeps that date, and then when he comes back and closes it up, it bounces back around and shows which one it's on. So, it reflects until the issue is solved. Like I said, I tried to get some graphs in here, using Excel, just to kind of give an overview of the ability of your little bit of input. You can see kind of the areas we're focusing on. And if there's any concerns from the council, I think, you know, we'll be able to see where the efforts can focus and maybe ask questions or suggest some different ways of looking at it. The other graph, it's a polygraph, it says up the streets. I think Steve does a pretty good job getting around, seeing pretty easily. And I just found these out on the different streets he's hit. And then, the last table I put was outstanding code violations. And this was actually an idea from a resident who asked, you know, what's going on with this issue? And how do we get information on it? And I was like, it's a very annoying, because the code enforcement report, you know, it shows month to month, and it doesn't track things that are outstanding. So, we had to kind of do this outstanding. I think it's good because, you know, some shows a lot of fines, so that just everyone's in the know. And, you know, lists the code violation notices or hearings are sent out. So, we can track it, and it's space. The city hall generator, I got another option. It's the, it's a mobile unit, it's used. It's got a one-year warranty. I asked if there's any extended warranty plan for that. But it's a diesel generator. And if we were to get, because in the past, if you remember, it was, I think we got into the fire department, but we had a mobile generator that is well hooked up to the quickener battery. So, it's pretty much the same idea to run the whole building. If we use the same connection point, which will be in the back, it's a lower elevation, but it would be $97,000, which is a lot higher than the original price we got with the natural gas generator. But if we want to, and as another option, because the parking lot's a higher area, and, you know, if you get from flooding down in there, we can put a traction station with crawl spaces down there in the front parking lot and pull it up into there and hook it up. So, it wouldn't be, we would be avoiding the cost of putting it up on a stand and, you know, covered away when you're using it.
May I ask where you would store the trailer generator?
Back it up into the, it would be, it'd be a little tight if we put it. We stockpile some materials there, so we just put it up. Gulf Mexico lulli replacement, I have heard it. I'm reading on one more installation quote that uses this. I did find a contractor to do it for about $12,500. It was something over $20,000. And then, as far as Bel Air Shore, I relayed the message to their counter tour meeting, and she's taken it through February 21st meeting along the lines that if we were willing to fund the cost of the installation fees and the maintenance, would they be willing to do the other necessary steps to change the ordinance? So, we'll see what comes back on that. Morgan Parkin Parkin Lot is getting done this, this month. I just checked with the contractor, I did a date, so we're probably about to close the park. At least the parking lot today. Children's playground, the shipping that got pushed back to April 14th, it sounds like it's solid at this point. A little disappointing it's taking so long, but the, the used place that company is still interested in moving, so I'm trying to keep in touch.
Alright. Thank you. Council, any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Baker. Two questions. Do you know the main generator? Do you know the main of the generator?
It's a John Deere.
John Deere. So we're talking to you, main contractor, a little John Deere. Kind of like approach one, if you're interested, Mr. Banker, not just the ladder up here on like 13th Street and City Manager Report, see this by here eight years? I guess he's not getting just the water shut, or whatever. This is, I wasn't planning on asking that at all, this was just confirmation.
Okay. For the back here, I think Member Stable was asking about one of mine for 13th Street. I mean, that is a short-term requirement because I'm hearing, so just speaking.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the city manager? Yes, for Mr. Roberts.
So Kyle, on the extending the boat ramp on 7th Street, I'm just curious, so I should put it out there myself and see it, but what is low tide? Is the end of the ramp still in the water?
When the tide's very, very low, it really pulls back and you get that little island up there that it's exposed. So they're still going to have to back far out into the, into the water to flush it over that part. If that's what they want to do, it's possible, but it really does draw back.
Okay. So the engineering firm has in mind some distance that they're going to withstand those concrete bags, your rent bags?
Yeah.
To allow boat trailers to go further?
They go further. I basically get down to the bottom of the submerged ramp and just not like drop off or anything unstable.
Okay.
Now, as far as the water going back, if it really chimes out, you know, we're just going to have to look at it again.
Okay. The goal was to make sure that they can have a layout that they will follow.
Correct. The 17th and 18th Streets Stormwater Project, so that's listed there as a single project, but we're really not assuming that as a single project, is that correct?
That's correct. Because at the point we want to, to hold a fine issue in the home, to hold a project together.
All, beautiful, okay.
Okay, Melissa? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Riefer, I gave you a call weeks ago about a situation where there was growth coming out into the street. It was a hazard, it was an eyesore. I won't mention what street it was, but it was an unfortunate situation where the owner, it was physically impossible to help or do anything about it. So I called Mr. Riefer and he took care of it and his staff took care of it and I'm greatly appreciative as I'm sure the residents do to surround that location. So thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Thank you. On the 12th and 13th Street, I did see the contract got there maybe a week or two ago, where they were addressing some of the low spots in the gutter, which is wonderful, but it looks like, and I know you've gone in with an eye, if you're watching, but it looks like kind of a domino effect where they would raise the gutter level to make the water move in a certain direction. And it may have caused, you know, an additional problem upstream, lack of better term in the gutter system. But I know you're on top of that, so are they finished completely? Because I have still noticed some gutters that hold water.
Well, we're still holding under the canyon, so all the engineer go back and make sure.
Okay.
There was that one session, they put that flow line in, it was pretty much flat, didn't have a flow on the pond. Is there a specific area on 12th and 13th?
Yeah, but they were working kind of on 12th, close to the pond, you know, on every side of the pond, so they were working in there raising it, which I'm sure that's a low spot. So they were trying to create a scenario where the water would move through the grates, which I'm sure it did. But they're doing something, sort of looked like because they raised that area to move the water, that some water upstream was now being held back. But something this table looked at, and across the street, I didn't notice one thing that I've been asking for. One of the grates looks like, I guess they weren't removed during the original project because, lack of better terms, rusty, was older, right there at the turn, you come in when you're heading east on 12th and you make a left-hand turn, what's that, Patty's about a, right there on the left-hand side, maybe that was one of those grates where we couldn't get them out? I'm not sure what the deal was there.
They still be new grates and they wash tape for that.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Riefer. I appreciate all your work. So next, 7th, Senator.
I don't have a project update per se, but personnel, we saw you met Aaron and he really jumped in with both of these, really enthusiastic. And then we made a offer of appointment for an administrative assistant, so we're waiting for that process to go through and for more help and friend to help the residents. We're really excited about that.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Patty? Thank you very much, Patty. All right, now we are up to the consent agenda, items eight and nine, for approval of January 9th, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes and approval of the January 23rd, 2023 City Council Work Session Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as consent.
Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Consent agenda passes. All right, we are now on to the regular agenda. Item number 10, this is for consideration of the appointment of Mr. Mark Mariano as a board adjustment alternate member. Mr. Mariano is present, would you like to address the council?
Sure. Thank you, counsel. Thanks for having me. So recently moved to the city of Bella Beach, possibly a year ago. Moved from Tampa, Bella, served on the planning board there for about seven or eight years. I have about 24-ish years of experience in land planning, city planning. I own a real estate company, now the CEO of another real estate company. So I could bring a unique perspective and level of experience to boards and I do like to give back to the community and participate as a board member where I can. And when I moved in, I thought, have you about any openings or aren't? So I went back towards the end of the year, asked again, she said, yeah, there are two, one for the board adjustments and then one for either parcel record, which probably is best applicable to my experience level. So I sent the application in, and this gender, we said, yeah, why don't you come in and meet the board, there is an alternative spot open. So I'm here to see if I can be appointed to the board adjustments.
Thank you very much. First off, can I pronounce your name correctly?
Mariano.
Mariano, okay, good. I'd like you to stick around for just a few minutes. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Mariano? Yes, Mike Stable. Are you pursuing any business within Bella Beach at this time?
No, we don't. We do multifamily residential apartment communities, that was my old company. We do multifamily, but it's single-family rental, large scale, 300, 500, 400, 500 developments around Florida and seven of the states across the country. So no, nothing.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Mariano, I heard a little bit about you and apparently you were just grossly overqualified for this position. However, if you would like to stick around and work with us, we'll wait to see what the council says and I appreciate you a lot for the position. All right, let's go to the citizens, I think you can have a seat, sir. Let's go to the citizens for the comments. Would you would like to comment? Yes, sir, Mike Kelly.
My name is Mike Kelly, your board adjustment chairman. I agree that Mr. Mariano is very, very qualified for the position. I think the opportunity or board to add him as an alternate member and potentially ultimately on the actual board is an advantage for Bella Beach. I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Mariano's development company, Mosaic, in the last two years at a commercial project in downtown St. Petersburg, although I only had a couple meetings with him for reconstruction, working with the general contractor, but the job went very smooth and the staff and the experience that I had working with his firm was very, very positive. So I endorse the council to consider his appointment and recommend him to be head board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. All right, before we debate at this point, I'm going to need a motion to move forward. Motion made by Leslie Natero. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Mr. Natero, you have the floor.
I will go for the others.
All right, would anyone else like to comment? All right, well, that's the case. Ms. Jentry, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Banker.
Yes.
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Stable?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Mariano, and thank you for volunteering to serve the city of Bella Beach. All right, we're on to, to the item number eleven. This is consideration of ordinance 23 dash 01. Mr. Moore, would you please read the ordinance?
Councilmember Mayor, this is ordinance 23 dash 01. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Bella Beach, for a vending section, 94 dash 220, pertaining to the table that does the living areas and housing setbacks, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading, ordinance 23 dash 01, by title one. Would you want to read the petition?
All right, then I'll thank you, Mr. Moore. Yes, you're about to give us a brief history of this ordinance and what it will accomplish.
Yes, there's been a few in the recent months, there've been a few hearings that have proceeded of areas, not based on any misrepresentations by a property owner or perhaps not even based on staff oversight, but based on confusion with how the city's code should be administered. As you can see, typically in a striking borderline, they don't call things out in red text, I did here because of the density of the table. But you can see here that the code made reference to a V I E W state, in a few instances spelled V I E W. There is no such place in the city. The prior ordinance actually did have the right language there, but as it was codified, it was unclear. There it was, it was written incorrectly as codified. However, in addition to that edit, there was most substantively, the very final row provided a completely different set of setbacks. You can see here, it's a seven, seven and a half, in the final row, it suggests that the W is the silent side setbacks with seven and a half feet, while earlier towards the top of the same page, it says that it's 10 feet unless it's on a series of certain laws, in which case it's seven and a half. And so, as administering, it became very difficult for the engineer, staff and otherwise to reconcile those positions and see, okay, if somebody is applying, what's the number? Well, it's kind of sort of this, but also that. And so to avoid that confusion, this is what in some communities might be called a housekeeping matter of cleaning up the code to avoid that confusion. And that's what this provision does. This is an instance of your city manager as the administrator of the code, having administered it in a few instances now and said, I think we can do better. Randy, can you draft something out, particularly for P and Z? P and Z reviewed it at the end of last week and recommended approval to the commissioner found it in line for the commission to move forward. And so it is now before you on first reading.
Before we go to the council, we need to go to the citizens. Would any citizen like to comment on this ordinance 23 dash 01? All right, I'm going to need a motion to approve ordinance 23 dash 01 and then we will discuss. Motion? Motion made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. Mr. Banker, do you have the floor?
I guess the ordinance is, says what it says. I think there's annual discussion.
Anyone else? I think I have a question. Who called this?
Kyle. Kyle called this in the, he's over there trying to address his own issue.
Kyle ran away.
Kyle called this after, after a couple instances where, you know, property owners or their developers representatives were trying to apply and try and make sure we administer the code properly. And I would say that Kyle, when he called it, prioritized it. This was an issue that manifested only in the last, less than two months. And Kyle immediately said, well, we, I know we can change it, let's change this quickly.
Next, Joe. Do we have any other questions or comments?
And?
Yes.
Under section 94 dash 220.
Recording in progress.
It says, title says minimum living areas, and then it says within the residential mode district, following maximum living areas and minimum house setbacks. And then the table talks about the minimum living area, so is that?
That will be harmonized by a second reading and that was in the original text as well, and I appreciate you catching that and then bringing some attention right before the meeting. We'll definitely make sure that that is harmonized. Remember, Natero is noting that it says, the title of the section is minimum living areas and setbacks, and while we're concerned with setbacks here principally, the next sentence under it says maximum, and then the table goes maximum, so we just need to fix that line, it's the following maximum, which is true. So that will be done before your next reading.
Thank you. Any more comments before we take a roll call? No? Ms. Jentry?
Councilmember Banker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Stable?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. That is the first reading of ordinance 23 dash 01. Okay, we are on to agenda item number 12. This is for authorization to execute continuing contracts for engineering services. This was placed on the agenda by city manager Riefer. Mr. Riefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So in October, council meeting, it was recommended that we go out and get a RFQ for continuing engineer contract services. So from that point, city attorney Moore provided me with a great type of a starter phone that he was comfortable with and we changed it around for our purposes and advertised it on November 16th. And we received statements, qualifications, all the way up to December 20th. From there, distributed the packages to Heather, our financial consultant, and handled through them. We did an initial screening, scored it based on the score sheet that's found in the RFQ. At that point, so we had six for us, we're all five, we were wondering what we had to do to schedule all those, they haven't used on January 20th. Just did an act of that. And learned a lot, finished the scoring up. Again, my recommendation, because we determined that all these, if you're firms are professionally qualified for our services, they have a lot of examples of projects they've done in local beach communities and other small cities and areas. So I'm recommending that all six, we can continue contracts with and then when we have a proposal, we send it out and see what we get back from that.
Okay, I bet that was a very interesting interview process and I didn't miss that. Before we bring it back to the council, do we have any comments on the citizens? All right, I'm going to need a motion to authorize the city manager to execute. All right, I'm going to need a motion to authorize the city manager to execute contingent contracts for engineering services. Do I have a motion? So. That answer? Yes. Okay, and do I have a second? Second by Leslie Natero. My say, will you have the floor?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody who set up a pool of eligible contractors and just like to move to a vote.
Any other comments from the council? Uh, yes, Mr. Roberts.
Just a quick question, Kyle. So, once this gets passed, there's some confidence with, do we have the six engineering firms in-house? What's the process that we could use? So, when we have a need for an engineering firm, do we have a process in place? What is the process?
Well, the process sort of changes with this RFQ because it does have an actual manual site process here. So... It's called a work authorization form, it's on schedule A of that contract. And for example, like if you were going to a stormwater project, you write it up on that form in a universal format, and distribute it to the engineer firms to have the contract.
Okay.
And then they would come back with their proposals. The other thing would be the site line review. Same idea, we're going to put together the script and lay out all our needs, and then we're going to see what comes back. We kind of have some feeling right now, but that's all.
And then you and your team, which is fine internally, you guys make the decision in regards to whatever the qualification process is, as to being one of the board?
My idea of the site line review is to have multiple firms on deck. Maybe we ran into in the past, we had a firm that did it very well, had health issues, and then was kind of scrambled. So, I'd like to at least kind of have two in practice. You know, go from there. That's more along the lines of, if someone does a new build, it's a hundred dollar fee. Keeping the fees that they collect in check with the engineer and service hours or having to be in place for maintenance. When it's a project proposal, that would be, will distribute the work authorization form, give the proposals back, but that will come for you because of the large number at that point.
No? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Reefer concerning this? Any comments? No? Okay, let's take it to a vote. This is to authorize the city manager to execute contingent contracts for engineering services. Patty?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed.
Thank you.
All right, we are up to item number thirteen. This is for consideration of approval for a budget amendment to increase the stormwater system account due to project change orders. This also was placed on the agenda by city manager Reefer. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Okay, just to clarify, the money will come from the same fund as our water fund, it's increasing our project budget based on the orders that we experienced. And that accounts, the total amount is thirty thousand nine hundred seventy-seven thousand ninety-eight cents. That's made up of twenty-six thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and ninety cents, which was from the main contractor coming in under Lou Lights. And they exceeded the contract, which I'm going to. And then the other is for, because of some conflicts, we're experiencing some more additional engineering hours up the field. And that was an increase by Trans Systems, which was created through dual associates. If you remember, engineer science group originally had this contract and dual took over that contract. So, we kind of shuffled it out. The... I just went over the history here and the original contract and all. One thing we can tell though is when we did a total bid amount of seven hundred seventeen thousand dollars, the base project items was six hundred fifty-two thousand. And then, you know, with every project, we have ten percent contingency. And in that bid, we had if needed items, and instead of having those built into the contract, we said that they would come out with contingency. So, that left us with that sixty-five thousand dollars contingency warranty. Over the course of the project, we had seven chambers, which some came before me because of the imbalance. We covered the inlet box, modified conflict structure, unknown RCP removal, plus replacement twelve-inch PVC pipe. We, it was a smaller chamber, decided to put a class three, or a class four RCP versus class three because of supply shortages, it was just in our time. Unit price of asphalt increased over the project, it comes a pair of five million new years. And lastly, we did some extra milling, because if you're about to 12th Street, 13th Street, the chroma load is extremely high, so it's a lot of asphalt overlaid on top of it. And in some areas, it was like five inches thick of asphalt. So, we did some extra milling to bring it more in line with the curb for the final project. And I think the engineers that calculated the degree of challenge ended up. So, I included, not only their payout, but I included my spreadsheet, which I was tracking the project. And there's two items that went significantly over, over what the original budget for. One of them is that eighteen-inch brush concrete base. And there was an explanation from the engineer, because of the additional pipe that we put in, these areas where we had to do the conflict structures, needed more base, so that ran over. The other area I pointed out in the if needed items was the brick driveway replacement. After discussing the engineer, the brick driveway replacement was an estimated amount that really was no way of going around replacing those papers, because that would affect the pavement. So, I just kind of, you know, for future projects, you know, ask, you know, this isn't really important, I need some more natural base concrete. And I think that would give us a better forecast of what we're going to do this time. So, just want to comment that. And then like I said, the additional field work from the engineer to deal with the conflicts, we had some inaccuracies, so we actually talked about it previously, just caused a lot of field work.
Thank you very much. Now, let's go to the citizens who would like to make a comment. All right. Now, we're back to the council. We're going to need a motion for approval for a budget amendment to increase the stormwater system account. Do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Motion made by Leslie Natero. Do I have a second? Second? Second by Frank Baker. Councilmember Natero, do you have the floor?
Kyle, you've done a great job of explaining what this is and why it is, so I'll just deal with that.
Anyone else like to comment or ask a question?
Uh, yeah, this is just a brief, I just received a text that they cannot hear, some people outside cannot hear, so it's Mark's admin. Our microphones? Sorry, we're grabbing their neck, actually.
We'll halt the meeting for three seconds or so while we... All right.
Thank you, and I apologize for talking before.
All right. Would anyone else like to comment or question? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
I think that's a great idea in future projects. If anything we can do to minimize the as-needed breaks, so we can tighten down on the budget and get closer at the end of the project. So, I think that's great in the future, if we do that, that's perfect.
I too appreciate the great amount of detail that you gave us, every special mayor asking for money. This is a very refreshing, and I'm sure all of us appreciate it. Do we have any more comments or questions before we take this to a vote? All right, Patty, would you mind calling the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Natero?
Yes.
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Zabel?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Perfect score tonight, unanimous. Mr. Reefer, you are approved to amend the budget. Okay, now we are on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? I think we've pretty much covered everything. The city manager's report is outstanding. And now we are on to councilmember comments. This month, we've here selected councilmember Roberts. Do you have the floor?
I like the lottery. So, actually I do have something to say, Kyle, about the 12th and 13th street project. So, for the current in place, I, for the two bikes that actually go to the outfalls and to the area we talked about previously, could we talk to the engineering firm to see if they could come up with additional alternate options? Obviously, current in place is one option, another one might be to slip line those bikes that would reduce some of the volume, but it's a bike within the bike. Technology changes so fast out there, so if we could ask for alternate approaches, so that when it goes out to bid, that the contractors could, maybe on their own, if we give the authority to submit an alternate bid that they think may save us money and provide us with a similar quality solution, just so we're not confining the bid to one option and perhaps there's another option available out there that they are aware of, we need to give them flexibility.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Next up is councilmember Natero.
Do you have any comments?
Councilmember Livingston?
Good evening. I had a conversation with Kyle before the meeting, and his citizen come up to me inquiring about the road signs in Bel Air and how the sun fading has affected several of them. And Kyle assured me that those rounds come in on a semi-annual basis, and the implementation of our team member that he will be checking that, that will be on his checklist.
That's going to be what I do assignments and have to certainly have them. It takes a little wheel to me, and yeah.
Thank you very much. And just for the rest of us, if we have a home and the road signs are in your home and there's some foliage and hedges whatnot that are competing, those signs, just to be aware of that and make sure for the safety of all our residents that we take care of those, because Kyle assured me that that's our responsibilities home over. So, thank you for that, Kyle. And welcome, team member Roberts, very lucky to meet you, and also welcome to the team.
Just as Kyle, he had a very late flight, I think he got in about three thirty this morning, so he was very tired all day, so.
I can imagine.
Normally, we'd say there's no excuse for that. All right, councilmember Baker? Do you have comments, Mr. Mayor? All right, councilmember Zabel?
Sure, just want to say thank you to councilman Frank Baker for the invitation and pledge allegiance. And for admin, I will be out the next monthly council meeting, I've got a corporate meeting out on the west coast. See you then.
Thank you very much. Right, Vice Mayor Shirley is out, so now I'm up. I met with the other Sankeye mayors today, along with the county commissioner, Brian Scott. We discussed alternatives for beaches. Right now, it looks like the Army Corps of Engineers is unwilling to move on this project. And the clock is ticking. We get heavy rain, wind, and typhoon storm, it's just a little away our beach. And we're in good shape compared to many of the others further south on Sankey Island. Today was just a start. We had some lively discussion, and I think having Commissioner Scott there, the board will get back to the county commissioner that it's probably time that they seriously consider doing something for our beaches. Without the beaches, they would not be able to collect the amount of revenue that they do. And I think it's time that they consider giving some of that back to save our beaches. We're meeting again soon, and we're also going to take the county administrator for a little tour, show him exactly what's going on with the beaches, make sure that he's fully aware and held accountable. As we continue to discuss this and have these meetings, I will do everything I can to keep you updated during our meetings. And other than that, as always, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And for those attending at home, I do apologize if there was a break in communication, and keep your messages coming in. If there's a failure, please notify one of us, I think not the city manager, just to make them aware that maybe we should halt the meeting for a couple of minutes. And with that, on that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion adjourned. Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second? Second made by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Good night, everyone.